Good morning, everyone, and it's so nice to see you all. And we welcome those online this morning as well. Welcome to our study in the Book of Revelation. And today, we're going to be doing chapter six. So if you have your Bible, you might want to open it to their chapter six. And before we get into it, I would like to just have a little word of prayer and ask God's blessing on our time together. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. We ask you to give to us the Spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of Christ, that the eyes of our understanding might be enlightened, that we might know what is the hope of his calling and what the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints, and what is the exceeding greatness of his power to us who believe according to the working of his mighty power. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Before we start, I would just really like to have a little review because there's new people watching us online today, and they haven't been following us up to now. So I just thought I would like to have a quick review. Chapter one was all about God revealing Jesus and in his glory and in his majesty. And he came and gave to John on the island of Patmos a vision. And that vision has what has been with us all these years. And the book is all about Jesus, really, and his glory and his majesty. Chapters two and three deal with the churches, seven churches. And the Lord Jesus had a message for these seven churches. And we went over them because they are churches that, well, we have the same problems today that they had back then, these seven churches. And then in chapters four and five, our eyes were open to see the throne room of heaven. We saw God on his throne and the four great beasts, the angels that were there, the 24 elders, and the worship. We saw a little bit of the worship of heaven in that throne room. And then last week, we were doing chapter six. And this is the beginning of the, according to the pre-tribulation view, the dispensational view, this is the beginning of the tribulation, the seven years of tribulation, the beginning of sorrows, and so on. We went through the seals, and seal number one, chapter six, verse one. We had a white horse. And we discussed the options of that. It could be Christ coming to move in triumph through the church, or it could be deception by Satan because the rider on the horse did not have arrows to fight with. He had a bow, but no arrow. So it could be the Antichrist using international power and politics to conquer. The second was a red horse, and that represented civil war, strife, bloodshed, and so on, on the earth. The third seal was a black horse, and that represents famine. And we talked about this famine and inflation and economic disruption. A day's wage would cost a loaf of bread to buy it. But it wasn't worldwide. This famine was not worldwide because the oil and the wine were not to be touched. Then today, now, we're going to start the fourth seal, and that is chapter six, and it's verse seven and eight. And this is a pale green horse representing disease and death and pestilence. And I'm just going to read it to you from the New King James Bible. Verse seven, "When he opened the fourth seal, I heard the voice of the fourth living creature saying, 'Come and see.' So I looked, and behold, a pale horse; and the name of him who sat on it was Death and Hades, followed with him; and power was given to them over a fourth of the earth, to kill with the sword, with hunger, with death, and by the beasts of the earth." This is a very interesting judgment, really. A fourth, can you imagine? If our population of the earth is 7 billion, a fourth of that is going to be destroyed, killed. But it's only a fourth. So God is limiting the judgment. It could be two, you know, it could be a greater half, you know. But it's not, it's only a fourth. So God is limiting his judgment. And unbelievers still, at this point, can be saved if they're in the earth. We will be gone, the church will be gone, we will be raptured. This is the beginning of the tribulation. And according to the pre-tribulation view, we will be gone. But there will be those on the earth who will, who still will have the opportunity to be saved. Now, hell and Hades. There are two compartments in the underworld. One compartment is hell, and it's referred to sometimes in the Old Testament as shiel. And Gehenna, hell and Hades. Hell is the place of eternal conscious punishment. Eternal, conscious, you will be aware of what's going on there. Punishment for the devil and unbelievers. Matthew, chapter 25, and verse 30, records this. "But no one is sent to hell until the final judgment," in Revelation, chapter 20, and verse 14. No one goes there until Revelation, chapter 20, and verse 14. Hades, on the other hand, is a temporary place for unbelievers when they die. Let's suppose an unbeliever dies today, he would go to a place called Hades until the final judgment, in Revelation, chapter 20, and verse 14. In that chapter, hell and Hades give up the dead, and they are put into the bottomless pit. So there is a time, so this is for unbelievers. In the New Testament, do you remember the story of the rich man and Lazarus? Lazarus went, and the holding place for Christians was Abraham's bosom. Do you remember that? And so that's where Lazarus was, whereas the rich man was in Hades. So, and so a fourth of the earth is killed and by the sword, with hunger, that would be famine, with death, and the beasts of the earth. And this is an interesting study, and some people have done study on this, how that animals are becoming more and more fierce towards humans. Before, animals were scared of humans, okay? But now, they're becoming more and more aggressive towards humans. And so some people have studied this in depth and found out that there has been a change and that animals are becoming attacking humans more than before. And I'm sure some of you may have stories about that, of animals attacking humans and killing them, and so on. All right, so we'll move on to the fifth seal, and I'll just read it. That's verse nine. "When he opened the fifth seal, I saw under the altar the souls of those who had been slain for the word of God and for the testimony which they held. And they cried with a loud voice, saying, 'How long, O Lord, holy and true, until you judge and avenge our blood on those who dwell on the earth?'" Then a white robe was given to each of them, and it was said to them that they should rest a little while longer until both the number of their fellow servants and their brethren, who would be killed as they were, was completed." This is martyrdom, martyrdom, murder, persecution. If you check Matthew 24, verses four to eight, you will have many of these same things that I've just given to you this morning. Matthew 24, verses four to eight. Let me just say this, in the Old Testament time, when an animal was killed, the blood was collected for a sacrifice, and the blood of that animal was put at the foot of the altar. The priest would take the blood of the animal and pour it at the foot of the altar. But notice here, what do we say, what does John say? He said, "I saw under the altar," not the blood of animals, but the souls of those who had been slain. So this is the blood of the martyrs under the altar. I read recently where since 1900, 29 million Christians have been martyred, since 1900. Isn't that amazing? 29 million Christians. And they say, those who record these kind of things, statistics, that daily Christians around the world are being martyred in many countries. It's a terrible fact that there is great persecution now against Christians. And so these martyrs are saying, "How long, oh God, are you going to wait until you avenge our deaths? We died for you. When are you going to avenge this death?" And he just says, "Wait, wait a little longer" until the number of those who have, the number that will be reached of those who will be martyred. But who are these martyrs? Are they these martyrs that are praying in heaven? Who are they? Are they the 29 million I just mentioned? Or are they the martyrs that were killed during the tribulation period? You see, there's, or both, both groups, there's perhaps a question there. Okay, let's go on to the sixth seal. Now, these five seals that I have just given to you are selected and for like a fourth of the earth was killed, and so on and so forth. But now, starting with the sixth seal, this could be the beginning of the rapture according to the pre-wrath view. I didn't give you this view at the beginning. I gave you pre-tribulation, mid-tribulation, post-tribulation, and partial tribulation. But there is another view, and it's called pre-wrath rapture view. And this view says, "At this point, there is a great earthquake, and that's when the rapture will take place." That's what this view holds, the sixth view. All right, let me just read it now, the sixth view, verse 12. "I looked when he opened the sixth seal, and behold, there was a great earthquake; and the sun became black as sackcloth of hair; and the moon became like blood; and the stars of heaven fell to the earth as a fig tree drops its late figs when it is shaken by a mighty wind. Then the sky receded as a scroll when it was rolled up; and every mountain and island was moved out of its place; and the kings of the earth, and the great men, and the rich men, and commanders, and mighty men, every slave and every free man, hid themselves in the caves and in the rocks of the mountains, and said to the mountains and rocks, 'Fall on us and hide us from the face of him who sits on the throne and from the wrath of the Lamb; for the great day of his wrath has come; and who is able to stand?' It's a question. Like I said, the pre-wrath view of the rapture says that when this earthquake takes place, the church will be raptured at that moment. And therefore, the TV cameras, the news media, when they're saying, "Where are all those Christians, where are all those people?" They said, "Oh, they were destroyed in the earthquake. The earthquake killed all the Christians." That sounds like a good excuse for the news media, doesn't it? Now, that's just a view, and it's held by some very outstanding scholars, this view is. But we tend to think that the rapture starts at chapter six, where I said at the beginning of the chapter with the first seal and the four horsemen of the apocalypse, we say. So this seal is an earthquake. It's a cosmic catastrophic event that hits the earth. It could be an earthquake, it could be a meteor, it could be an asteroid hitting the earth. There's a very famous scholar in the United States, maybe you've seen him on television, Dr. Thomas Horn. And he's a scientist, but also he's an Assemblies of God minister. And he says that in 2025, there is an asteroid that's aimed to hit our planet, Earth. And the scientists in NASA are aware of this, they're aware of this. And they're trying to develop something that will destroy the asteroid before it hits the earth. Or it could be a nuclear war that explodes. You know, no one really knows. I'm just throwing out ideas to you of what some people are saying. But whatever it is, starting with this sixth seal, it's universal. The other ones were confined, famine, maybe to a few countries, maybe martyrdom to a few areas that are in the world. Civil war and bloodshed, the red horse, that could be another country or somewhere where there is civil war and strife. But the seal, number six, is worldwide, it's universal. And it's the, now, everyone. And look at the people, and look, there are actually seven here. The sun is one, the moon is two, stars are three, and there's actually seven also, the sky. "Every mountain and island was removed out of its place." You know, I can remember in the Philippines, I thought of this verse in the Philippines because the Philippines are 7,000 islands. And I thought, "Oh my, if all the islands are moved out of their place, I'm so thankful that my family in the Philippines and the friends that I know are all saved because they'll be gone." But every island, think of all the islands on the earth. You know, even here in Canada, we have islands. "was moved out of its place." And then there's seven, there's kings, one, rich men, great men, two, rich men, three, commanders, four, mighty men, five, every slave and every free man. There's seven, again, seven is a number of completion, remember. And so, and so the question is, who is able to stand? Who can stand? No one, no one can stand. No unbeliever is going to be able to escape this judgment, no one. We should be very thankful to the Lord that God has saved us. We will not be here, we will be absent from this terrible, terrible judgment. And no unbeliever will be able to escape this coming judgment. They pray for the mountains, but who made the mountains? God made the mountains. So instead of praying to God, they're praying to the mountains. You can just read it here. "They prayed and said to the mountains and the rocks, 'Fall on us and hide us from the face of him who sits on the throne.'" They know he's the one sending these judgments, but they won't repent. I just can't imagine that, that if you were to sit through all of this, that all these six judgments, and still not repent, and yet you knew that it was because of the one who sits upon the throne. And from his face, you wanted to run away, you wanted to hide in caves, you know, from the face of him. And you're asking for the mountains and the rocks to fall on you. Now, there's only one suggestion that I have heard, and I'll just share this with you. Why don't these people repent? Is it because they have already taken the mark of the beast? And once you take that mark, there's no way you want to repent, no way. After you take the mark, that's it. And so it could be, now, that's just one, this suggestion by some, okay? And I'm just throwing it out, that that would be a reason why. Only those who are sealed with the seal that God will give them, and we're going to read about this seal in chapter seven. All right, let's continue, we'll go on to chapter seven. "After these things," okay, I need to explain that. "After these things," in the Greek, it's called metatata. And that means, metatata means, there's something going to happen in the future. So we're having an interlude here. Chapter seven is an interlude, it's a break. If you watch TV, it would be like a commercial, okay? It's a break. So up to now, we've been looking at these judgments. Seal number one, seal number two, number three, and so on, so on, so on. Now, there's a break. There's seven seals, but we've only done six. And we're having a little break. John could be seeing a vision, and this chapter could be at the end, actually, of the Book of Revelation. It could very well be at the end, but it's a break. Remember at the beginning, I said to you, it seems like he is, John is seeing this and this and this. And so he sees these six seals on the roll that Christ is holding. One is broken, two is broken, three is broken. He's down to six, and the judgments are so terrible. And then suddenly, his attention is turned, and he sees chapter seven. Okay, what is in chapter seven? "After these things, I saw four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding the four wings of the earth, that the wind should not blow on the earth, on the sea, and on any tree." Okay, now, I'm just going to stop there, and he sees the wind. The wind is universal judgment. He sees the wind, representing universe. It's on the four corners of the earth, and these four angels are holding back the judgment that's going to come, number seven. These four angels are holding back that judgment "until God's chosen people of Israel are sealed. Only then will God open the seventh seal." Now, the seal. "Then I saw an angel," verse two. "Then I saw another angel ascending from the east," that's the source of blessing, the east, "having the seal of the living God; and he cried with a loud voice to the four angels, to whom it was granted to harm the earth and the sea." So these four angels are going to bring judgment on the earth and the sea. But this one angel cries out with a loud voice and says, "Do not harm the earth and the sea or the trees till we have sealed the servants of our God on their foreheads. And I heard the number of those who were sealed. One hundred and forty-four thousand of all the tribes of the children of Israel were sealed." Okay, what is this seal? The angel is saying, okay, to the four angels that are going to bring judgment, "Wait, just wait a minute, I've got to seal the 144,000. What is this seal?" Well, there's some suggestions, and like before, I'm just going to pass them out to you. Is the seal the Holy Spirit? Ephesians, chapter four, verse 30, says, "And do not grieve the Holy Spirit of God, by whom you were sealed for the day of redemption." Or Ephesians, chapter one, and verse 13, "Having believed, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise." Is it the Holy Spirit? Or, or, is it an invisible sign of God's protection from his wrath? These men may have, may suffer, people may suffer, but if you have this invisible mark that God puts on you, then nothing can harm you, nothing. So let's just read, 144,000 of all. Verse five, "Of the tribe of Judah, 12,000 were sealed; of the tribe of Reuben, 12,000 were sealed; of the tribe of Gad, and Asher, and Naphtali, and Manasseh, were sealed; and Simeon, and Levi, and Issachar, Zebulun, Joseph, were sealed; and of the tribe of Benjamin." So 144,000 were of these different tribes. Now, the question are, the question is, I should say, are these Jewish men godly remnant of Israel? Is that who they are? These men are virgins, they are pure, they have never been defiled. They are, is it actual Jewish men? Or, I'll just give you, are they spiritual Jews? Galatians, chapter three, verse 29, says, "If you are Christ, then you are Abraham's seed." If you belong to Christ, you are Abraham's seed. So I would like, at this point, to read what the commentary said, okay? So that you can hear it right from the commentary concerning these verses. "The number, 144,000, is 12 times 12 times 1,000, symbolizing completeness. All God's followers will be brought safely to him; not one will be overlooked or forgotten. God seals these believers either by withdrawing them from the earth," and this is called the rapture, "or by giving them special strength and courage to make it through this time of great persecution." Even though many believers have to undergo persecution, the seal does not necessarily guarantee protection from physical harm. You may have physical harm, many will die, but God will protect them from spiritual harm. No matter what happens, they will be brought No matter what happens, they will be brought to their reward of eternal life. Their destiny is secure. These believers will not fall away from God, even though they may undergo intense persecution." So this is what the commentary says. They, these people represent the pure church of God. And I don't know if this is right or not, but I'll share it. Many missionaries on the mission fields can hardly wait until these one hundred and forty-four thousand people, men, start evangelizing. They are going to do a greater work than we missionaries have ever done. They will be supernaturally empowered with an anointing from God that people will not hardly be able to resist when they come to them with the gospel. They will receive. There will be a great in gathering due to the work, the missionary work, of these one hundred and forty-four thousand Jews that will go out throughout the world. They'll go throughout the world. They may be harmed physically, as the commentary said, but they will not die or spiritually destroyed. These men will be kept by the power of God. But we long for the day when these people come to do evangelism. I'm just sharing that with you this morning. So, "But all others who believe during the tribulation period will die. You may have a son or a daughter who's not living for the Lord, perhaps backs lidden, lukewarm, neither cold nor hot spiritually. But if during the tribulation period, this, up to now, up to this point, that son or daughter is witnessed to by a believer, one of the forty-four thousand, or just any believer, and repents, and gets serious with God, they may die. There's a good chance they may die. They may be martyred, but spiritually, they will be saved. And so I think as parents, if you have put a good foundation down in your family, you know, brought your children to church, raised them in the church, and so on, so on, they will know, okay, this, this is going to be a tough time. Christ is going to be trying me to see where my love and my devotion lies. Does it lie to him? And if they make that choice to serve the Lord, they may go through this terrible, terrible time, but their soul will be saved, and that's what you want. You want them to be eternally with you, even if they have to suffer martyrdom at this point. You might notice that the tribe of Dan and the tribe of Ephraim are missing from this list. And you know, in the Old Testament, there was the tribe of Dan and the tribe of Ephraim. That was because of their rebellion and idolatry in the Old Testament times. These two tribes were known for their rebellion and idolatry, is a suggestion here. Okay, so we'll go on, we'll move on, until we come down to verse nine. Now, this is such a very interesting verse. "After these things," now here's again, this metatata, so he's looking into the future, perhaps at the end of the book. "I looked, and behold, a great multitude, which no one could number, of all nations and tribes and peoples and tongues, standing before the throne and before the Lamb, clothed with white robes, with palm branches in their hands, and crying out with a loud voice, saying, 'Salvation belongs to our God, who sits on the throne, and to the Lamb.' All the angels stood around the throne, and the elders and the four living creatures fell on their faces before the throne, worshiping, worshiped God, saying, 'Amen! Blessing and glory and wisdom, thanksgiving and honor and power and might be to our God forever and ever.' Amen." Okay, let's just stop there. A great multitude. Who are they? Who are these people? No one could number. "Of all nations, tribes, peoples, and tongues, and they're all standing before the throne, and they're all clothed in white, representing purity." Are these the one hundred and forty-four, I'm just throwing it out. Are these the one hundred and forty-four Jewish men, plus the people saved during the tribulation period? Or are they the redeemed throughout history, from Adam, Enoch, Noah onward? The church, us, us, the church, raptured saints? Including the martyrs of chapter six and verse nine, that we just talked about, that twenty-nine million martyrs? The church triumphant? Is this a picture of the church triumphant in heaven? All of us, standing there, all in white, and singing along with the, those around the throne, the angels, the elders, the four living creatures, you know, those four big, big angels I talked about? Okay. And we're all singing, amen, blessing and glory and honor to... It's interesting. Some feel that this is just the tribulation people. Others feel it's the church, it's all of us, standing there before. But isn't it exciting? Isn't it gonna be wonderful, anyway? You know, to stand there and praise him and worship. Again, I'm saying worship is such a big part of this book. It's amazing how much worship and songs are here. All right, now, verse 13. "Then one of the elders answered, saying to me, 'Who are these arrayed in white robes, and where did they come from? And I said to him, 'Sir, you know.'" So he said to me, "These are the ones who came out of the great tribulation, and washed their robes, and made them white in the blood of the Lamb." Great tribulation could mean here that seven, this seven-year period that we're studying, or it could mean the tribulation all down through the ages that Christians have suffered. All the persecution under Hitler, under all of these, in Korea, in China, all the persecution down for ages, and under Nero, how the Christians were killed in the first century, second century, third century. Is it, is it all of these? Or is it just this one particular seven-year period? It's a question. "Therefore, they are before the throne," verse 15. "They are before the throne of God, and serve him day and night in his temple. And he who sits on the throne will dwell among them." Isn't that a wonderful thought? God is going to dwell, live among them. "They shall neither hunger anymore, nor thirst anymore; the sun shall not strike them, nor any heat; for the Lamb, who is in the midst of the throne," remember, Jesus is right there, in the midst of the throne room, "will shepherd them and lead them to living fountains of waters. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes." Hallelujah. Isn't that a wonderful thing? Whether it's for those who are killed during the tribulation, who have gone through such suffering, or those who have suffered all down through the ages. Now, we don't know what it's like to live in North Korea, and we don't know what it's like to live in China for Christians, but it's not easy. And I'm sure they cry night and day, oh, Lord, how long before we are delivered? You see? But anyway, there will come a time when those who have been faithful throughout the ages are going to sing, and God will wipe away every tear from their eye, no more suffering. All believers have been resurrected to die no more. So this is a wonderful promise, whether it's for us, all of us, or whether it's just for those suffering during this seven-year period, whatever, it's going to be a wonderful time for us when we reach heaven. Okay, so we have done seal number one, two, three, four, five, six. Now, we're coming to seal number eight. I hope I'm not going too fast, but if we don't, we have 22 chapters to get through. But in chapter number eight, now we come to the seventh seal. And the seventh seal is opened, and the beginning of the trump judgments, trumpet judgments. We have seven sealed judgments, we have seven trumpet judgments, and we have seven bowl judgments. Okay, now, some believe that, starting with chapter eight, is the beginning of the first three and a half years of tribulation. Some believe that. This is the beginning, for some, perhaps the mid-trib believers, I'm not sure. This beginning of the first three and a half years. The seventh seal that Christ breaks on the scroll, when broken, leads to seven angels given seven trumpets. Okay, I'm going to read verse one, chapter eight. "When he opened the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about half an hour." What do you think this silence? Now, half an hour, that doesn't mean a half an hour according to hour watch. It just means a short period of time. But why this silence in heaven? Why isn't there anyone shouting praise, or why is it silence? Well, I can throw out one or two suggestions. Maybe everyone was shocked when Christ unrolled that scroll and saw what was, and the people saw what was written on it. There could have been shock at the terrific judgments that are coming. Or they were awestruck in anticipation. What's gonna happen now? When's it gonna happen? When's it gonna start? But for some reason, these people are quiet for a brief period of time. All right, in verse two. "And I saw the seven angels who stand before God, and to them were given seven trumpets." Okay? Then, "Another angel, having a gold censer, came and stood at the altar. He was given much incense, that he should offer it with the prayers of all the saints." Okay, now, isn't this interesting? That when this is announced, the seven trumpets announce that severe judgment is coming. And it's, actually, it's a common belief between the Old Testament and New Testament period, that God was given the prayers of the, of the Christians, and that the angel collected all of our prayers, put them in a censer, gave them to God. Actually, this is in the book of Tobit. It's in the, we don't have it in our Bibles, but in the Catholic Bible, I believe it is, chapter 12 and verse 15. It was a common belief between the Old Testament and New Testament period in Judaism, that seven angels presented the prayers of the saints to God. And that this was put in a censer and given to God. Now, the trumpet, the trumpet is a warning signal. There's seven trumpets, warning signals, that judgment was coming. And it's also a call, or it could be a call to repentance, and it will announce, of course, the return of the king. But here we have the seven, the angels with the seven trumpets, and the, verse five. "Then the angel took the censer filled with fire from the altar and threw it to the earth." That means the beginning is starting now, the judgment is starting now, threw the censer to the earth. "And there were noises, thunderings, lightnings, and an earthquake." Here's another earthquake, okay? "So the seven angels, who had the seven trumpets, prepared themselves to sound." And here we have the beginning of these plagues. And I think you, those of you that remember the plagues of the Old Testament, you will see they're similar. There are some that are similar to what happened in the Exodus, Exodus, chapter seven and Exodus, chapter nine. Okay, now, the first one. "The first angel sounded, and hail and fire followed, mingled with the blood. And they were thrown to the earth, and a third of the trees were burned up, and all green grass was burned up." So the first judgment affects the natural world. Okay? The trees and all the grass. The second trumpet. "Then the second angel sounded, and something like a great mountain, burning with fire, was thrown into the sea, and a third of the sea became blood, and a third of the living creatures in the sea died, and a third of the ships were destroyed." Again, because it's a third, this is partial, it's not complete, it's not two-thirds, it's one-third, meaning it's partial. At this point, the judgment is partial. And these are events are actual and cataclysmic, like the first seal, the trumpets are, were only partial. But in, in this one now, they begin to be really, one-third of the trees, one-third of the grass, still it's partial. The second trumpet, a great mountain with fire. Now, again, this could be a meteor or an asteroid which destroys one-third of the sea, turns to blood. You have that in the plagues in the Old Testament, in the Exodus. One-third of the fish die, and one-third of the, of the ships were destroyed that were in the sea. So again, it's partial, and, but it's, it's coming. The third trumpet. "When the third angel sounded, and a great star fell from heaven, burning like a torch, and it fell on a third of the rivers and of the springs of water. And the name of the star is Wormwood. A third of the waters became Wormwood, and many men died from the water, because it was so bitter." And Wormwood is a herb, a very bitter herb, but it symbolizes the tragic results of sin. This Wormwood, this star, again, whatever, again, it could be a cosmic convulsion of some kind. And this is the fresh water, this time. The fresh water is now contaminated. So what are the people going to drink? The saltwater was already destroyed, a third of it. The sea turned to blood. And now here in the fourth one, the fresh water is affected, so we can't live without water. So, I mean, and it's the Wormwood, Wormwood being bitter. And it's interesting that in Chernobyl in Russia, the nuclear plant was called Wormwood. And I understand there is something in NASA, a meteor or something that they are calling Wormwood now. The fourth trumpet. "Then the fourth angel sounded, and a third of the sun was struck, a third of the moon, and a third of the stars, so that a third of them were darkened. A third of the day did not shine, and likewise the night." A third of the day did not shine, and likewise the night." Now, again, this is the ninth plague in the Old Testament, under Moses. In the Exodus, it's the ninth plague, a plague of darkness. And again, this, what is this that would cause this? Again, it would be some kind of cosmic convulsions within the atmosphere, within the heavens. There would be some kind of whatever that would cause this darkness, that only God knows how this is going to happen. We, we don't know about, if it's an atomic bomb that go off, they could darken the sky so that the sun will not shine. But of course, this is only guessing. We, we just don't know what this could be that would cause this cosmic, but a third of the moon, a third of the stars and the sun darkened. That's gonna be a frightening experience, just think about it. If you were alive, you're not gonna be here, but, you know, to think about it, living like this, with the sea, the, the oceans are not fit to have fish or eat anything out of them, and the fresh water destroyed, and the hail and fire and so on, all green grass, a, a third of the trees are gone. And so then we have this fourth trumpet. Okay, verse thirteen, then. "And I looked, and I heard an angel flying through the midst of heaven, saying with a loud voice, 'Whoa, whoa, whoa!' to the inhabitants of the earth, because of the remaining blasts of the trumpet, and of the three angels who are about to sound." And in this new King James, it said, "I heard an angel," but perhaps in your Bible, it has eagle. Yeah, okay. An eagle refers to like a vulture, okay? A vulture, an unclean animal, flying bird, I mean, flying to announce the coming judgments. And Habakkuk, in chapter one of verse eight, uses an eagle to describe swiftness of destruction. It's gonna happen fast. All of these are gonna happen one right after the other. It's just going to be one seal on the scroll, broken after, there are seven, remember? Seven seals, okay? Now, we're down, now, we're down, and we're at the trumpet. And the trumpet, the first one here that we have is in chapter nine here, or chapter eight, this is the seventh trumpet, the seven trumpets. And now, they're gonna be broken, one after the other, after, we've broken four already this morning in chapter eight. Chapter nine will bring in the fifth trumpet. I'm not sure if we have time this morning to get into chapter, we have just five minutes left, but chapter nine is going to, will begin the fifth trumpet, and, and I'll just read it so that you'll have something to think about. "Then the fifth angel sounded, and I saw a star fallen from heaven to the earth. To him was given the key to the bottomless pit." Okay, the star, who is that star? Fallen, fallen from heaven. Who fell from heaven? Satan, didn't he? Many, many years back. He fell from heaven. Some people say this is the time now, then Satan can no longer accuse us before God, because now he is fallen. Other people say he, he was fallen in old, in the Old Testament time, when Christ died. He bruised his head, and he was fallen then. Some say it's here, at this point. "The star was fallen from heaven to the earth, and to him was given the key to the bottomless pit." Who holds the keys right now? It's Christ. Christ holds the key. So either Christ gave the key to Satan, or Christ gave it to an angel to give to Satan, and to him to open the bottomless pit. "And He opened the bottomless pit, and smoke arose out of the pit, like the smoke of a great furnace. So the sun and the air were darkened because of the smoke of the pit." Now, that's how terrible that pit is. "Then out of the smoke came locusts up to the earth, and to them was given power, as the scorpions of the earth have power. They were commanded not to harm the grass of the earth, or any green thing, or any tree, but only those people, those men, who do not have the seal of God on their foreheads." Isn't this an interesting, that only those who do not have the seal of God. The seal of God is protection for us, folks. We, we, we should be so thankful, whether the seal is the Holy Spirit, or if it's an invisible seal, but we should be so thankful that God has sealed us for the terrible time. Of course, we won't be here, but for those who will be here, they can be protected. So, and from this terrible, terrible plague of locusts that's going to come upon the earth. And next week, we want to go into more detail concerning this terrible period that we are entering, entering into now. So let me just close now with a word of prayer. Our loving heavenly Father, we are so grateful that we have been redeemed by the blood of your Son, Jesus Christ. We have been redeemed by the blood of the Lamb, and that we have the precious Holy Spirit in dwelling us now, even now sealing us from as terrible times that will come upon the earth. That we are covered by the arms of God. We are sheltered in the arms of God. We are covered by His precious blood. Lord, I thank you for our viewers online today, and those here in the church. I pray that you would bless them, heal them, and answer the prayers of their hearts for their unsaved loved ones. Grant this prayer, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.